Well.
So, this is just for you girls. Okay, ready, everybody? Thank you all very much. Sure, I'm sure you'll love me.
Hey, Max.
No, not right this moment, but. We record, don't we? We don't go live.
I record, yes, and like posted as soon as it's done.
So. This evening, I should be getting some paint now.
Get a few pictures.
Yeah, they think once they move out here, free from their city, from embarrassment.
Not for those teenagers.
Okay, six o'clock, I will call. Meeting order, we could all please rise to the presentations.
Loyal allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which we stand.
See, now we have the roll.
Yep.
Consent agenda, or approval of the agenda, excuse me. So wanna make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Well, second.
One second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on it? All was in favor?
I.
I. Opposed, none, seeing as that is. Items of the consent agenda this evening, one. Will be passed with one council motion unless there's something, someone would like to remove.
I have a couple.
Okay.
Want, uh, B, R, and S. And I would like to add H. P. And R.
Yeah, R quite.
Yeah, okay.
No way to talk to us.
Okay.
We have what, Ron? B, R, F, B, and S. R is due. Okay.
You said. H and P.
H, P, R, you said.
No.
So, B, R, S, H, P.
H and P are mine, that's correct. Okay. And I would make a motion to. Approve tonight's consent agenda minus the items B, R. S, H, and P. I will move it when you go. My consent agenda minus the letters you just mentioned. Okay. All's in favor?
I.
I opposed. None. Minus those items, um. Done.
Can we just, and by no order, can we just go through the consent alphabetically instead of bumping back and forth? So I can stay our organist too.
You bet.
Thank you.
Item B.
So. Item B, so. I just had a question, I was reading through this and, um. There was this, uh. A one property. That they wanted to be. Um, detached from the city.
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, detached from the city.
Mm-hmm.
I was just wondering, um. Where, what the, eh eh. Where A one zone was and, and what property this was.
Okay, um, I'll play it out on the running. Running now, in front of us. So, A one is your green ag. Zone, right, um, that usually road is our border line. And the property, um, in question is in this square.
Well, that's part of the city.
Yeah, that's agricultural, an agricultural zone, yes.
So, it's potentially, and then I read what you, what you guys came up with, so, okay, I just have, and then further on that. So. Any homeowner or landowner that is in the city limits, they could potentially ask to get their land. Um, detached from the city.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Changing their tax revenue, or their tax structure. Detached means they wouldn't succeed from. The municipal boundary.
When on annexing.
And unannexed. Okay. It's the opposite of annexing. So. Are they still? Paying city tax on their home, like, property tax, is it still that? Yes. Because there's a different rate outside of the city limit, I guess is what I'm asking. Yes, nothing's changed. Nothing changes, okay. And. Well. You just asked if they're still paying their property taxes, I said yes. But was there a different question to that, because it sounded like you meant to ask it a different way? I probably did, um. Nothing has happened to this. Right, okay, I mean, like, in the future, like, what's? I've never heard of a detaching, so I'm just, I'm kind of. Okay, it's just another framing of the label to either annex or unannex a property. Okay. And what's the benefit of? It's up to that, that partition, that particular property, whether they are. Upset for whatever reason, because the property taxes are too high, which usually end up being the case. And they would rather be attached to any bring time shift, and that's usually the first. Okay, so, so that does answer my question, their tax base does change from being a city limit person to an outside. The city limit, if that was your original question, then that was, that is the answer, okay.
But any request would have to be approved.
Most definitely.
By the council, so.
And the township that they would ask to be attached to. But this has not even happened yet, so, yeah, you're just asking for the procedure.
Yeah, the person involved is not the deeded owner of that property.
That is correct.
So they're eligible to request.
My understanding, I would have to check the statute if that was anything eligible.
I was, yeah, I kinda, she, Lori kinda asked, but I follow up question about that. Um, I was just kinda curious, um, how that all kind of fell into play in there.
Okay.
And why they would want to, okay, so they, and so now I know.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so. I guess she wants to follow an order there, so we will. They, H would be next.
Yeah, uh, this is a water income statement, it just drew my attention to a questioning issue, but. Um, we seem to be already over budget for property insurance.
That is correct.
We're, we spent three thousand and the budget was about fifteen hundred.
That, that is also correct, and additionally, in your consent agenda, which. I see that was not a removed item, um, from you, is the. Property and liability insurance payments is in your consent agenda, that is item marked. Uh, why the new facilities? Property insurance is now, coverage is now included.
Hmm.
In our. You know, we have to cover that now, now that there's a structure on there.
Police.
Yeah. Correct, and it's, um. It's annual. Pay type. Its total is like twelve thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
To cover the building. So that's split. Build between water, sewer, streets, and police.
Mm-hmm.
And that's why you'll see it in the water income statement, you'll also see it in the sewer income statements.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't think it was over.
It may not have been, because sewer has a lot more property. Than water does, when I start to judge it.
Yeah, I, I assume that might be the reason, but I.
Okay.
Whatever I see, a budget over budget, so.
Not a problem. And if I could make one more note on that, so that you, the council is aware, the, um. The coverage right now, we're only paying the first half, neither the second half thing. And that is just a, that's just a budgeting thing that I do, to stretch it out.
Okay.
So that's only happening. The property and the liability thing, show, show right now.
Very good. Clear. Yes, uh. Onto item P. P. So I have another budgeting question.
Okay.
What the, what did we pay six hundred eighty-three dollars for office equipment and furnishings?
Uh, ergonomic chair, but I don't have any workers comp issues from my back, and geeking for a dog, I needed a new chair.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I'm R.
Okay. The chat to me with, uh. Chief of.
Right.
So. Moving forward with this, um. I know it's not all set in stone and everything, but. Before this all would happen. Don't we have, have another meeting about this, or is this all just the way? Is. Is set, I, you guys, oh, it's set up, oh, I read it, I mean, so you guys. We had the big meeting, and then that's all we ever had of our.
Mm-hmm. So. I recorded the personal committee meeting minutes, I directed, was directed to make an offer, that offer was accepted, and this is the agreement that. Transpired from that.
Didn't you change the offer, or what?
No.
We. Okay.
No. This is a per payroll. Uh. Stack of, if you're looking at the.
Yeah.
That's a payment on the items, uh, one under renovation.
Oh, alright. Um, it just caught me off guard for some reason, and so that's why I'm asking about it.
Okay.
Um. So. When I was reading it, I was like, something, something didn't, didn't seem right, so that's why I'm asking about it, so.
And, and did I answer your question?
Well, yeah, that's, so, payroll.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, alright.
Yeah, I, I had a similar question, that was on my agenda, I would have expected this would have appeared on the new business at some point, I was just kinda surprised it was stuck to an empty. Consent agenda, and we're making an offer to somebody. And I looked at the minutes of the. Personal, specifically see that we have a particular person who are making an offer and everything.
Right.
So that did, has been placed according. Would I? Would have thought we would have a sign off on the version for number in the business at some point.
Because it's somewhat of a personnel matter.
Mm-hmm.
I did not bring it to new business. I do believe we discussed it in the work session, though.
Yes, and, uh. Hiring also is. I know. Up to.
The personnel committee.
Yeah, well, with the personnel and. Christine.
Christine, yeah.
But it's sitting, and the consent agenda is also a signing off on it.
Mm-hmm.
So I did have a clarification question, it says that it's going to commence as of the date we determine mutual agreement.
That is correct.
Do we have a date?
On. The, um, contracted party, Mr. Earhart. Is, um, going on vacation starting the ninth, or excuse me, actually, this Wednesday, my apologies, um, he'll be gone until the nineteenth. And his predicted availability will be to commit his, um, his Wednesdays to the city.
Hmm.
Um, unfortunately, because he has Wednesdays and Thursdays off from the county.
Mm-hmm.
That would not allow us to be able to start until probably the twenty. Sixth of April, so, um, the other. Um, reason that that date was left out is that we are also working, he's trying to work with, um. The other interim chief right now on his availability, so that they can shadow each other for a couple of weeks, and give full dedicated time to doing it. Without, you know, starting vacation, leaving and then coming back.
Hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and then the last part of that sentence, it says, or when a suitable replacement is hired.
Right, remember, we're also contracting him as an interim.
Yeah.
And the personnel committee in the work session was discussed that we have to keep him as an interim, because he's not full time.
Mm-hmm.
So, if the city were to be able to hire a full-time. Police chief in the future, then Mr. Earhart would just remain a part-time officer. On our roster.
You put.
And step down in those passes.
With the same hour or one. No, no.
No.
Okay.
Because if that is the case, then not, he would be an at-low employee instead of a contractual employee.
Okay. Questions answered, we move on?
Hmm, yes.
And. On the item task, what's on, it's on everyone's mind. Who wants to take the questions for the?
Another question. So. I just have, uh. So, it's, so, it's a punch list have to be completely, if, Eric, first of all, did you guys move into the new building? We're in the process of somewhat moving stuff over there. Okay. So is this punch list have to be done before you get occupancy? No. Okay. Oh, okay. Um. That's good. Um. So, and then I had one question back a while back, you guys said that you guys. Put, put the sink cabinets in the, in there and everything, and the sinks and all this stuff, I just kinda wonder where that money came from. Where, what do you want, because we didn't have the money to start out with, we. We, you, what we did at, uh, value engineer, we took the cabinets out of, out of there, and. And the kitchen's out of there, and all of a sudden, now we put cabinets in there, and.
So if you remember, at the point of the value engineering, one was to save money and two was to cut costs.
Yes.
And you that going our own road would cut costs. But still coming out of. Where everything else is coming out of for the project, we just saved ourselves. Only thousands of dollars, aren't we?
So the bud. Maybe to elaborate on what Mike is saying. Specific answer to your question, um, Dawn is, the funding. For that specific item would be funded out of the same departments and funds that. Um, funding for the actual, the full project is coming from water, race water, streets, and police.
Yeah. Right, I'm good.
Okay, and we also on the question list, but Ron, you know. Same item, or?
Yeah.
I don't know, we don't know about, alright, okay. And can we get a motion to approve these items?
Motion to approve item B. R, S, H, P.
Well, second. Okay. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor?
I.
I. Opposed, none, those are passed. Uh, anyone for the Blacklist forum? No one, gonna move on to. So you spell, Mike, public works. How's the snow?
I officially declare today the first day of spring in Black. Took the sulk around the pickup and dropped the, the follow-ups and. At this point now, we're, we're done with the snow, we've got to assess a few roads and take care of a few bottles here and there and stuff that we started doing today and. Try to get, uh, the old L E C cleaned out and everything, hopefully, this week, we don't have much time left on that. Put that cleaned out and start, uh, moving the rest of the equipment, stuff down to the new shed. Be plugging away and stuff, we don't have. Much for you guys, other than that, that's what I've been working on.
I assume you'll be overseeing the punch list?
Yeah.
And. Is there a way? That the council can be made aware of? Progress on the punch list as we go, I mean, other than monthly?
You'll essentially be sitting where I'm sitting with it, you know, as of right now, I know some of the things that they've done and some that they have and stuff, and once I know, and then. He'll know, you'll know.
Yeah.
You know, they've got, they've got some time still, basically, that's the way it's all laid out, but it's coming along.
No, I'm not, it's almost there, I'm not trying to kick anybody in the butt over it, I'm just.
No, no.
Those things get completed, yep.
Yeah, we see her completed.
I will definitely get you up to date on that, on I can give you an update on that too, because I did check with Brett Donovan today, so. Uh, the countertops were installed about a week ago or so.
Yep.
Unlike the formal, they're coming back then to hook that, um, infrastructure up. Sounds like the door hardware is mostly done except for one that was broken.
Uh, I believe that got put in today. Uh, water got turned on briefly today, but it looks like they need something, just to touch on your plumbing deal.
Yeah, that door hardware is in. Okay. And Mike is in the process of moving in. Uh, he said the majority of the punch list items are completed, you know, there's still the, um. Compressors that are outside that we got to, you know, charge up this spring and wait for weather, and we'll wanna make sure we have the snow on, so you can check the griddling and things like that. So we're hoping by the end of this month, Northern Major cooperates, and we can, we can mess up times, and it sounds like we're being close.
Yeah, was there anything odd about the electrical installation, I know we were, punch lists where it wasn't installed properly, the outlets were upside down, G F C I. Is, not individual G F C I's, and we're.
There, there is a little bit of a, a back and forth on the outlets, they've been switched, basically. They were called out to be installed with the ground plug up, and they were installed with the ground plug down, and they've. Kinda gone back and forth on which way is the right way and which way is technically correct, but they were changed to meet, you know, the way they were called out in the spec, so. That's all good.
That's been done, and the G F C I thing has been.
I believe so, I'd have to go and double check, but I believe so, I think Todovich came and, and went through everything that was on the electrical punch list. Almost right away after receiving that.
And I don't think, you know, for the council's benefit, I don't think you get updates, the way it works is we prepare the punch list and we send it off to the contract and say, here's your laundry list. As you get stuff done, put down the date that it's done, and then we'll have to come back and verify that from everything on that punch list, which is right.
Those you got going on?
Open that, uh, this melt goes okay and that the rain stays away. I don't want to see it like the last year.
Neither do I.
Right.
Still up to my eyeballs.
Yeah, I definitely don't wanna do a FEMA anymore. So.
Alright.
Yeah, lots of, lots of irons in the fire right now, I don't need to bore you with all of them, it's day-to-day stuff for me.
Good. But we can take your word, there's no more snow coming, so, right?
You know what, I, I'm not gonna go quite that far, we do live in northern Minnesota here.
Saturday and Sunday they're calling for snow.
You can just leave right now, man.
Nice job on the, the testing, by the way, all of our waters great and.
Try to keep the best you can.
I know, good job.
I appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
Next. Shonda.
Um, well, we've had a run of. You know, bad luck, but, uh, we had, um, our. Two-door freezer, um. Break. Uh, we had neighbors come and look at it, they're like, it needs a new compressor. So we did our due diligence, do we fix this one? This is the only piece of equipment that we did not buy new. When we remodeled the kitchen. We bought this one in nineteen for a thousand dollars at the A one. Shop in the midgy. So, um, what I'm proposing to do is get us a new. Two-door, um, freezer, and the quote is, or the, yeah, the quote is in the packet.
The dimensions are basically the same as what's.
In there.
In there now.
Yeah.
Didn't you get an estimate on fixing the ones?
I did, um. They came back about fifteen hundred dollars plus labor. So there's no guarantee, there's no, there's like a ninety-day warranty on it.
Yeah. Plus labor.
Yeah, yeah, so in six months, it dies again, and you're looking at another fifteen hundred dollars plus labor to fix it. You know, how much you wanna just. Throw at a.
Well, being the purchase price was a thousand dollars, I mean, it's, it's had a life already before.
It was used.
Yes, yes, and it, I mean, it's. It's worked for what it was, um. But we need a new one, I mean, even when it was working at its full capacity, still was not. You know, not perfect.
Mm-hmm.
I wish we'd have thrown it out and got a new one when we did the kitchen, because it was a lot cheaper. Hindsight.
Alright, yeah.
Historically, out of all the, um, major appliances that are down at the liquor store and the kitchen. Uh, freezers and refrigerators tend to get the hardest amount of use and return over. Probably every three to four years, it seems like.
Yeah, it's, because it's a lot of, that was the prep one, so there's a lot of opening and closing all day long. So it works really hard.
We, and we're, this will be covered. Will we give you a?
Uh, performance, which is, that's where we purchased the rest of our, um, kitchen equipment from.
Okay. And.
And it has longer warranties on the.
Rogers. Minnesota, but. So they would be coming up to service it?
Uh, no, this is, this is, they don't, they don't service it, no, but they do warranty it, so you have to. Get, you get ahold of the company and you say, there's something wrong with this, um, we're calling. A certain person. And then they go, okay.
Is there a? I, I, is there compressors getting blown out regularly, cleaned out regularly?
Um. Yeah, I mean, we do.
I mean, service wise, because you know, we're gonna put in a six thousand dollar freezer, seven thousand dollar freezer. We wanna know that it's.
Right.
And I know Nailers has some of our other service.
Yep, yep, and.
Or is this.
The thing is, is we, Melissa and I, Melissa and Lori, more specifically. Um, take good pride in the kitchen, so on Sundays they get a clean down, um, we have been kind of babying this freezer. It gets opened up, everything is taken out, it gets defrosted every week. You know, at this point. And the same attention will be given to that one. As it is, that we did make this thing. We babied it along, yeah. As long as we could.
But going forward, when Nailers does do service for us every six months.
We'll make sure that they give it a good look over.
Everything, it will get added to their rotation for their, uh, cleaning.
Yeah, filters and stuff, coolers.
And Nailers also does warranty repair work.
Yes, but for us, with, if our kitchen appliances, since we get them from Performance. You will see that it says Ryan up in the corner for our contact. I would contact him. And then they would contact the nearest person. To come and fix it. Performance has their own service people. That takes care of their warranty work.
Right, but.
So we would call Ryan and he would call the service guy and.
Ryan would make sure that it was under warranty.
And Ryan will make sure it's under warranty and then they will send somebody to fix it.
So what you said, we like to listen to.
And that's actually really good, because the other, the closest we could find would be three years on any of the other new units.
Okay. And they'll just be, they'll be coming out of.
It'll come out of their liquor store budget.
Store budget.
Yep. So Shonda will have to make some. Well, concessions on some of the other budget items this year in order to balance her budget.
And how about the? Uh, what about the big cooler, the cooler door, the beer cave?
Oh, that's.
I mean, if it's a. How much to fix that?
That we haven't even, we haven't even got a quote on it first. We've got to take care of our maybe problem first.
The door company won't even come take a look at it, so we can get maybe a, figure that out first.
Okay.
And I am working on that.
Hopefully that'll be a work session, conversation. We don't have enough documentation to really share with everyone about that, exactly.
We can do that.
I'm collecting more information as we speak, so.
Yeah. Uh, someone wanna make a motion on this? And obviously it's something we need, you know. It's your main fridge.
So main fridge.
Kitchen's kinda. Give you a good level of refrigerator, freezer. Yeah, for, and the, put the dollar amount in your, in your motion. Uh, we, we can use this total here. That's at seventy percent, or what are we, what number is our total number?
Your total number should be six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents.
And the freight is an estimate though, right?
Nope.
Not a minute, you got it?
Yep.
Right, okay.
And actually, yes, it, it is an estimated, so kind of did high end on the estimate for the shipping, but it could go lower.
So if we went to seven, we won't use it, just because we said seven.
Yeah.
So, so the gas prices are gonna go down?
They do for a day.
So six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents.
On those approved freezer purchase with a pond. That you want to six thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty cents.
You have a motion. Wait a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, opposed? New freezer? What else is new?
We have bingo on Sunday.
Can't wait if you're not there, really, that's. Is that a positive effect on business?
Yeah, it does. It does.
Liquor sales are up during bingo.
Yeah, um. Bingo is kind of one of those things that. Yeah, it, it does give our Sundays a boost. It definitely does, yep.
Noticeable, I mean, in liquor and food sales?
Yeah. They're, they're not a huge, huge drinking crowd.
Hmm.
So, yeah. But, uh, yeah. This is our slow time year, so the meantime we can get the parking lot full is good, it's good and positive. Our linked bingo is going well, um. We anticipate this summer that's going to be a big. Draw for people. Coming up.
I don't have anything else.
Moving on. I actually spoke with Kelly, but. There wasn't anything she had, but it was.
Yeah, and I just asked Lori prior to the meeting, this, this is probably my misunderstanding, I assumed. From my last communication with Kelly that she was gonna be at this meeting, but maybe I misunderstood and that's supposed to be the work session. So I left her on the report, so I apologize.
And I think the only thing really that I know that's changed is that they finally got their. Their, um.
By the one C three?
Yes, yes, so that's for the, that's for the Black Tech Library.
Yeah.
Friends, right. Friends of the library, so they finally have their non-cupid. Account set up and they have friends of the library. There's still some things to be worked out about.
Well, they're looking for sponsors too for the.
Mm-hmm, they are looking for sponsors.
City tractor pull this. Summer.
For the Friends of the Library as well.
Good.
That's a. Membership.
It's a, is it? Volunteer board?
Volunteer board that you pay for. So.
I understand.
But. But they, they'll make all the decisions almost.
Good.
Deal with all of the fundraising and the financial needs and so.
It'll be good to have it all.
Yeah.
Cleaned up. Onto. Uh, unless somebody else has something else about the library. Christina.
Uh, first item of business is to consider a donation request from the Black Duck After Prom Committee. I apologize, but Sarah, um, Anderson came to me this afternoon and she had a conflict. Um, and could not get a committee member to attend. But I did supply council with the remaining points of historic interest from donating that they. Um, requested at the work session, including. The last year's. Um, donations to civic organizations.
Sarah did reach out to me also to. If you guys have any questions about it, I have served on the prom committee. I did supervise chaperone prom until six A M the next morning when the lock.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's quite production and it keeps the kids out of trouble.
Goes on all night?
It goes on all night.
It's a lock in.
I can hear it all.
Yes, it's, they. They use the money to purchase, uh, you know, quite a bit of the prizes and stuff that they give away.
Hmm.
Lot of it is for seniors, kids that are graduating, you know. Those microwaves, stuff like that. The candy dorm room. Positions.
Christine.
Where you're forced to cook for yourself. What was that?
Income statement for the liquor store real quick. I would kind of look and just see where we were at, um, on our budget for year to date. For our donation giving, we had a budget set last year, I think, kind of went over and. We needed to rein in on that this year a little bit, so I was trying to be so on it.
Currently. Um, currently the city has donated four hundred and forty-seven dollars and ninety cents of the six thousand dollar budget. For two thousand twenty-three. Right, okay, so, so we've only made one donation so far this year, okay, I'm glad you put these on, yep.
Looking at the history, is there a reason we have a fifty percent increase last year?
Covid and, you know. Just bouncing back, I think.
Yeah, and there wasn't, there wasn't a prom.
Yeah.
Prior, or, yeah.
Twenty twenty, yeah.
So, I see that's missing, and then twenty-one was the same amount, and then twenty-two.
Yeah, well, twenty-one we had donated, but then there wasn't a prom or.
No, twenty isn't on here, so twenty twenty, there was no prom.
Right.
So then we donated. I, and I would imagine costs, so. You know, everything has gone up. I'm not sure, I wasn't here between two thousand and sixteen and seventeen for that, that large increase, so.
I don't think. I'm thinking last year was the biggest increase.
Well, it's five hundred. But you can see where.
Fifty percent.
Over twenty sixteen, yeah, well, fifty percent over twenty.
Yeah. And that's. Use the phone.
Yeah, so.
We need to take it back down.
Yes. I agree. So we'll have a number in mind.
Well, so here's, I, I'm not, if you go down, there's the civic do, donations that we did. So we still have some to go, like. For the toys for the kids, the trap team, the garden club, that was a one time deal, okay? And so we don't do that, we don't give them anything normally, okay? And I guess the thousand one were.
And the trap team, that's only if they go to state.
States, nationals.
National, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
And, well, we. We do have a lot of issues, but, um. Even though we had a few of them graduated. Yes, incoming kids are checking on a few of them, they're pretty good.
Well, these are, we're suing both organizations, and for any else, that's everything that we donated to us here in twenty-two. Alright, yeah. So, yeah. That was the four forty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to do less, or?
No, I think that thousand was good. That, that number.
Yeah, it seems to be leveled at that amount since twenty seventeen, we have, like I said, the fifty percent increase last year, so.
Yeah.
Going back to a low amount. The students of public funds, that can be a good, a good thing to do. Someone wanna make a motion?
I'm wishing to approve. Thousand dollars to the. Prom party. Prom after party.
Do you have any? Wait a second, I will second, I will second that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None carries.
The next one is to consider a donation request for Maximus and Solus. To attend the rest of us to have additional family members attend. Link him as the. Cause he represents the city at the national. Washington.
Let me discuss this thing.
I, I gave my opinion on it.
Right, um.
I request like a formal request as well to accompany.
Exactly.
First documentation, so.
I saw the second page previously, with the work session.
That is correct, Rob.
So I thought the second page was. We talked previously. That didn't contain a specific request for money, if you look at Jennifer's email and said for Max, would you also consider making that. Mayor or proxy proclamation? I thought that part was certainly agreeable, but. If you wanna look at the guidelines for donations, it's tough to shoehorn in. Not much message for them. And that's where you're at. Certainly, that activity will have a benefit for the community. Not know how we can squeeze that in. It's open for discussion, who knows? I would make a motion, I make a motion that. The request. For Max's rule is being denied. Financial. Denial, but I can still do a mayoral proclamation, part of, yeah, you're not denying a proclamation, no, I'm arguing publicly. For a while, but, uh, yeah, but. Thanks, Ron, that's, it's on. Okay, so now is there any? Discussion to the motion? I'm in, in agreement with the motion, I would just like to say, but I think it's a, a great achievement and. Because we're denying civic funds does not mean that many people sitting on this side of the table, uh.
They cannot.
Not make their own.
Make their own.
Personal decisions. And it's very clear in the newspaper what to, who to make the check out to. Very specific fund, and I will say that I have already made my trip over to Dewey Bank and. Decided that Max qualifies for my personal donation, not the city. That would encourage all of my colleagues who are of like mind to. Make the trip over to Dewey and do the same.
I accept your challenge.
Alright.
Thank you.
Uh, with that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried.
I will, uh, work on that black proclamation and reach out to you so that you can. Um, outline that directly.
At their convenience, yeah, they can do it and. Have them send away, whatever, I'll, I'll do that too.
Yeah, if you could advise the rest of the council, if that happens. You can make sure Max does everything good.
Yes. I wouldn't want to speak for your life. I might be able to tell that day. Moving on.
Moving on?
Please.
Okay, I can be, um. I have prepared the stage two documents for the USDA community facility grant mode application for the greater purchase from the county. Um, the documents require approval and signature of the mayor. Um, additionally, a public hearing must be called. And I um tentatively scheduled it prior to April's work session. If that does not uh timely work out, we can do it um at the May council meeting. I'm open to suggestions on that.
I'm good with the. April twenty-fourth. Should be.
Yep.
Yes, if everything lines up and.
I I do believe it will. The only piece of the stage two documents that I'm uh waiting on is our um uh approval document supplied from USDA to our city attorney and I'm just waiting on that from him, but we've got bond council support. We've got county um commissioner support. We have um uh, my goodness, what else? Uh, Miller McDonald, our independent auditor support is in this uh group as well. So since there's no super tight deadline on the documents, the sooner we can get it in, the better. Get funding. Cause April twenty fourth works with um Angela Baca Boy from USDA as well. Um, I will absolutely schedule it up. So all the documents could be approved with one motion. And like get those in.
Can you remind me, this is a loan and a grant combination?
So USDA, um their community facilities program for equipment, um depending upon how many applications come in. Uh, there could be a grant portion of it. Um, that will depend on how much money is in their bucket to give out and the number of applications and how they are ranked. Um, that you may recall at the work session, I noted that if USDA gets um our application for a greater and then for applications to help fund ambulances, they are gonna be most likely higher than greater. Um, so that'll just um provide us and USDA to be percentage of how much could be grant if potential is possible, excuse me.
They go by more.
Right.
So this could be a partial grant or.
It could.
Could be zero grant and a hundred percent loan.
That is also.
Worst case there was, it would be a loan of fifty-five thousand.
That is correct, no.
Motion to approve the stage two. Grant application documents for the USDA. And that includes the meeting on before the work session.
Correct.
Correct.
Second.
Second.
Especially. All's favor? I posed.
All right, the last item I have is um the April fifth was the deadline for the RFPs for engineering firm. Um, sitting in front of you are the seven submissions. And a quick summary spreadsheet of those seven submissions um with some high points. Um, what I would ask of the council at this point is to have one council member uh meet with myself and Mike to review these submissions and uh discuss them and rank them. So that they can be narrowed down for public. For council presentation.
For volunteer. Of the council. What would the number of narrowing down, what would your target be?
Well, I'd like to say two, but most realistic is probably gonna be three. But that'll have to be determined by a discussion. Once that's done, then um we can determine when that presentation that happened based upon the request of that, those engineering firms. Possibly late. Possibly the work session may maybe June, depending on timeline. It's a very busy time for everybody. But.
I remember the process we when we did it first. City attorney. Christina, I would, I will sit in on a meeting with you and Mike.
Yeah.
We can go through these.
And the purpose again is to narrow it down thoroughly and then it would be submitted to the.
Correct.
A little later now.
Correct.
Unless you're volunteering. Keep in mind, I'm working full-time, so. It's hard to get away. After I return all the more time.
Yeah, that's why Max stepped up. Okay, yeah.
All right. But I I would. Encourage everyone.
Please.
Take it home.
Please.
Read.
Yeah, everybody wanted this process, so.
If you've got something. Bring it to Mike, Christina, myself, and since.
And this is, this is just a very quick, I mean, I've only been through these books twice, so I know I'm probably missing some high points, but there are seven submissions. There's a lot of these out on here.
Grayson's not gonna like his bedtime story tonight.
Max will communicate with you and Mike about uh. Maybe in time that works good for them. For us to get together.
Yeah, that's fine.
Should put him to sleep.
However, you wanna do it.
I'm done.
Uh. We try to make him exciting.
You know, he is four.
No.
A remaining of my report are just uh several days. The nineteenth is the next planning commission meeting and we're uh going to be doing a light tour. If the snow keeps disappearing, we'll do it. Um, the twentieth is the next uh Black Duck ambulance board meeting. Um, that's here at City Hall at nine thirty. Uh, April twenty-fourth would be the council's work session and then of course the public hearing. I'll get that scheduled as well. Um, May second is the local board of appeal and equalization here at City Hall. The county assessor's office will have representatives here. And then May eighth will be the next city council meeting. Um, six o'clock. And unless anybody has any other questions for me, that's my report.
And the Board of Appeal Equalization, that does not involve council members and.
It does not, no, no, it's come, it's like an open house.
Yes, the assessor is holding. Yeah.
That is correct.
I like Christina's version of open house.
People can come and ask questions and there's no specific dates and appointments necessary by the people that wish to show up. If no one comes in, the the assessor's office spends about a half an hour here and then they.
Give me a jingle when this is another date. Or for this, for these. Oh, and just this, if I can make it work, I will.
Oh, okay, in addition to Max.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Alright. I will do that. We have.
Is there a DDC meeting or did I miss that?
Hmm. There is, but I don't have a number. This Wednesday. That Black Duck, of course. Eleven AM. Maybe you have problems here, if you're spreading out.
Yeah, you're.
Um, we have a couple from the planning commission that are volunteering, but we could also use more.
That's not fair.
It's May, May twentieth, yeah.
Yeah, it'll go, it'll go too fast.
Well, opener before we know it.
Yeah.
I think it's great that you find it the same day as the yard sale. That way we don't have to go back behind and go yard sales and clean up.
If there's always been a plan that way, yeah. Also more like a, you know, it's as if here's some free stuff, come and grab it. I don't have my garage sale kind of thought, but I don't think that's the intention. Hey, one man's trash.
Did we? They'll try me count or they'll try me like to say when they're gonna be pretty much done with our little.
Chopping wood?
Yeah, with our little.
No. Um.
For a while.
Yeah.
Okay, they started, oh, what, six weeks ago, I think, in the alleys behind the clinic.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be a good while till they're done, but then once they are done. We won't see this happen for.
Sometime.
Many years, yeah.
Yeah.
Every ten years, eight to ten.
Longer than that.
Yeah, it's been on the radar for years to do this, so they must have um either enough staff and or um, you know, not a whole lot of work. This spring and late winter to do this job because this is, this is.
I mean, I mean, it's good that we didn't have storms that bad, but we have damaged lines and stuff like that everywhere, but.
Well, we've got a thirty-foot high by seventy-foot long wood chip pile that field right now, growing every day.
So mold.
Yes.
Yep, there's lots.
All right, anybody have anything else?
Are you still on that?
I had a question on your upcoming events. So the chamber is renting the golf club for their Kentucky Derby party, is that right?
Yep.
I'm assuming somebody's told them. Isn't there intent to have it on the day of the Kentucky Derby?
Yes and no, that has been discussed, but this works best for um the intention of why they have this appreciation dinner. It's usually during the week, not on a weekend.
Purposely on Thursday.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Fourth, be with you. As well.
That's not a star roast thing either.
It's two days before the Derby.
Yeah, yeah. So there are still tickets available if anyone's interested that aren't sold by April twenty-fourth.
And I was just gonna mention another event. Uh, we have a a community institution that is retiring on Friday, the Sherry Nord over at Deerwood Bank.
Oh, sure.
Very true. They're having an all-day uh stop-in, anytime reception, coffee, and I think she's been in the banking business in Black Duck for. Whenever it's Black Duck State Bank.
A half a century.
No, she certainly do. When you're here, yeah. Sounds amazing. What she started, I mean, it's pushing, I think it's close to a half century.
Yeah, so her party is this coming Friday, is that what you said?
Yes, April fourteen and uh coffee and stuff available all day from one up to all, so.
Wonderful.
Do you have anything else?
Oh, you know what? I did not put on here is uh there's golf board meeting this Thursday afternoon at two, three. Two, I believe.
Two.
Two. I did not get that on the agenda for you guys to know. Yes, the golf board is meeting at the golf courses to the following Thursday the thirteenth.
Yeah. All right. With that. Okay. Is that a motion? There we go. All those in favor?
Who seconded?
I did.
Oh, thank you. Not here, let's fuck it, thank you.
I heard school ahead.
Okay, very good.